Like to open the executive session number.
So for open the regular meeting first, call the meeting order.
To call the September 13th, 2022, finding the zoning commission meeting order. Going to executive session.
Make a motion.
I need a motion to go into executive session.
Like to make a motion, I'll be going to executive session.
Second.
And you want to invite Chuck.
Oh, and invite Chuck.
Yes. Me.
And Beth and Neil.
David. And that's to discuss.
And David, I'm sorry.
To discuss pending litigation, we show the law. You found that right?
Second. We have a second.
Second.
All right.
Bye.
Okay. Everybody. Yeah, we're ready. Okay.
Open the public hearing for commission initiated amendments to the town of Bethel zoning regulations.
To appear September 2nd and September 9th, 2022 public notes. The Bethel planning is done in commission for hold a public hearing on commission initiated amendments to the town of Bethel zoning regulations. September 13th, 2022 at 7:00 PM, in conference room D of the municipal center one school street. Out of public act of 21 dash 29 of the state of Connecticut accessory dwelling units, which allows for a separate unit to be built in more residential zones. Outdoubt of public act 2129 of the state of Connecticut parking regulations, the towns are more stringent. Reduced height requirements in route six zone from four stories to three stories. Rep peel section five dash 12 Stony Hill mixed use overlay district. The changes in their entirety can be located on the town of Bethel's website and the town clerk's office of the town of Bethel. The public may send comments via regular email to land use at Bethel Connecticut dot. Parking. Parking, oh parking for hearing is located in the middle of the building, Ken Stevens chairman.
Right, okay. So basically, the regulation, I'll speak to the public, this they, this their regulations. Basically, the regulations that they're discussing tonight are presently within the zoning rights. This is um changes that the planning and zoning commission are recommending. Um very briefly, I'll just go through them with you in the layman's terms and more information I'd be more happy to get to. There's a regulation in the Route 6 zone and it's called studying of mixed use overlay zone. It number one allowed higher density. Number two, it allowed for four story buildings. Um, the commission has decided they want to go back to the original Route 6 zone, which has very specific um allowances dealing with square footage on the commercial area, dealing with parking, deals with height, that reduce all those areas, reduce the height. And uh density is the main main portion. The second one is dealing with accessory dwelling units, accessory apartments. States that the state took it upon itself last year to adopt a new public act that would allow accessory structures on any in any zone as a dwelling. So in other words, what that would have done is created two family zones throughout the whole town. Allow that in the town of Bethel, we have a very proactive accessory dwelling unit regulation. We allow it by the zoning department. It the caveat is it has to be attached to your house and it has to look like a single family house. Do not allow accessory dwelling units in separate structures in our higher density zones like our half acre, one acre, two acres. No, it is not allowed. We have double R10 zone, which is a two family zone. You're allowed to have two families by right. You are not allowed to have an accessory apartment in a double R10 zone. In our 10 zone, the quarter acre lot, yes, you can have an accessory apartment as long as it's attached to the house. There's two criteria for it. One, it should be for a member of your family. Because that's why most of us would need accessory apartments is because someone has to come live without. So we have to go live with someone else. And two, if it meets the affordable housing guidelines, which are very strict and stringent. I look around here and most of them would affordable. Okay, this the um. Second one was dealing with the parking regulations. The state of Connecticut has taken it upon themselves to tell us what parking should be. Parking should be one parking space for um one or two bedroom. In the town of Bethel, our regulations read differently depending on what zone you're in. Um requirement is more, in other words, we require more parking than the state of Connecticut is requiring through state statute. So we we're opting out of that. That's what we call opting out of the parking, opting out of the um. Accessory apartment. Uh, the second other part to this proposal is in the Route 6 zone for the last, since the Route 6 plan was adopted, and I can't recall if it was 2006 or 2009. Um, there was a height. Increase that was allowed under that plan. First time height increase was used was for this last development under the Schmoe. There was a lot of discussion between the commission members themselves and some concerns voiced by the general public. So the commission took it upon themselves after discussions of all these matters of reducing the height from four to three stories. So that's the regulations before the commission tonight. If anybody has any questions.
Is there any four story? I live in I live in number 106.
Excuse me, please identify your story.
Wait.
Your name and address.
Yeah, Harold Christensen, 16. Is there any four story, I'm not aware of any four story in 106.
There is gonna be a four story building. One building, if I recall, will be four stories down where the old Stony Hill Inn used to be. In the front there. The front portion of that.
Correct, so like, are we commercial?
No, it'll be a residential building.
That's already approved?
Yes.
Excuse me, Harold, you still need last name?
Yes, wait, R I S. D E N S.
T E N.
T E N S again.
Yes.
Can I just, can I just make one more comment?
Yeah.
So as a result of this, they you're you're gonna put in place, there will be no more four story. Can you repeat some of that?
About six.
Just close the hearing.
Close that public hearing. What's your close public hearing?
Second. Okay, the chairman, the chairman can declare a public hearing. The chairman can. The chairman opens a public hearing and the chairman can close. But thank you for giving an assistance.
I.
Glad to have you.
We're gonna open the next public hearing for Steiner Inc. Although, I understand will be no casting order this evening. Intended to.
Correct, okay, so Kenny's gonna read the litigants first.
To appear September 2nd and September 9th, 2022 public notes. The Bethel planning is only commission all public hearing on a text amendment proposed by Village Square appropriated for 29 Stony Hill Road. The town of Bethel's zoning regulations September 13th, 2022 at 7:00 PM, in conference room D of the municipal center one school street. The amendment to section 5.8 B C D design conservation district would allow for it to be applied to the route six zone. Changes into the design standards of patient. The changes in their entirety can be located on the town of Bethel's website and in the town clerk's office of the town of Bethel. Other place said comments via regular email and email to land use at Bethel Connecticut dot. Parking for hearing is located in the middle of the building, Ken Stevens chairman. To appear September 2nd, September 9th, 2022 public notes. The Bethel planning is only commission all the public hearing on map and then referred by Steiner Inc. For eight, nine, eight, nine, 10 and 17, no book road. The town of Bethel is opening now on September 13th, 2022 at 7:00 PM, in conference room D of the municipal center one school street. The property that you have in the assessors record as map 59, lot 104, lots 61, 62, 63 and 64. The application that you have on the town of Bethel website and the town clerk's office of the town of Bethel. Other place said comments via regular email and email to at news at Bethel Connecticut dot. Parking for hearing is located in the middle of the building, Ken Stevens chairman.
Okay, so this hearing for this, if you went on the agenda on the website and looked at the agenda, it specifically states that tonight, this hearing is tabled to the end of the month, September 26th, at the request of the applicant. So we will not be receiving any testimony or discussing the matter this evening, okay? Everybody got it? Everybody can hear me trying to let the air conditioner stay on.
So September 26th.
September 26th. Also, if you go in the agenda, you will see the info is uh in the Google Drive of the agenda on the town website. You will see all the informations there. Or if you wish to be in the office, you can come hook the record there. Okay?
And you want this straight and right across the line.
All right. Okay. Good.
This is the business meeting. First, order visitors to see Doug's with any. Exhibits.
You got that?
That's for Fanny. No, I'm sorry. That's for Fanny.
First item is the minutes from the 9th, 2022 meeting. There's interview, we have a motion to.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of 8:92.
Second.
Second.
Bob seconded it, I heard him.
Thank you, Bob. You all in favor? Have any in voices?
No, I'll probably come tomorrow.
Okay. Work session. Six in the line.
In regards to um. Six in the late, um I will tell you that the town has been working with the different departments of town engineer, public works, public utilities and such have been working with the design engineer of the project. Um, and so at this point, I spoke with or emailed the attorney Marcus yesterday, told him that at this point, I think I'm comfortable based on the consensus that he gave us a month and a half ago of preparing a resolution, which is for you to see. Yes, I'm gonna update the um. Grab. Grab our tablets. If the commission was so inclined to. Make a motion to approve this. Okay, um let me just go through this. Where the bold starts on the second page is where it would begin your motion. Unless it's been just listed out on the question before me and then the ending part of your motion would be reasons. No, you cannot. Just reference them. Go for it.
I don't know if it's, I don't see it here. The existing units that are already there.
Yes.
Is the town gonna get uh insured that one of those is affordable right away?
We say that one unit in the existing three unit structure.
But those three are already done and and people are living in them. So how long before that kicks in?
I would say it it could kick in immediately.
That's what I.
Depending on some of the other issues involving that three unit structure that happened.
So I know there's another issue, but I think, you know, I'm not seeing, I don't want anybody kicked out of their home, but the applicant just said multiple times that they think all three of those people qualify. I think the town should at least pay credit for the one that's already happened.
Yes. No, I understand.
I think, I'm sorry.
And I'm sure we, I'm sure we can. I'm sure we will.
Condition was pretty definite that we wanted only one of those units eventually to be affordable.
Yes.
And that the other two were spread out to the other.
In effect, that portion of the project is already done and there and there's people already living there. So I I want to make sure that that the person that's in that.
They get credit for it.
It's still good.
Yeah. My understanding there.
Well, Neil and I have to go through the affordability plan, that's part of the.
Okay, I just want to make sure that's.
And I I agree with you.
Okay.
I, that's my mind too.
Okay. That was, I think that's one of the questions.
Make a motion to the doc.
We're gonna have to give full consideration as well of the commission here by itself to approve this amended application under section 830GH. Application with the following conditions, one, before seeing reason in making its decision, the commission recognizes the need for 41,000 new town of Bethel. The commission also recognizes the changes made to the existing proposed architecture for the units by the applicant during the negotiation process and makes the proposed dwelling unit more inclusive to the surrounding.
Second. Favor.
Hi.
Don't forget Bob.
I heard him, Bob said yes.
We heard you Bob.
First plans, so of course, you know, wouldn't be them, plan set for back in 2017.
Yes. The engineering.
What? Leave the three families the way it is?
Yes.
Building one unit.
Weren't you there during the public hearing when we were doing this?
Definitely, it was kind of like whether it was you to go through or he was going back.
No, no. We went to the concept. David. Can you pull up the file for six city lane?
Yeah.
Just to show, I just want to show Sal. The one with the, it would be. Seven thirty twenty two.
Okay.
A combination with an architectural rendering.
Uh, let me see if I can find it here, Beth.
But there's still gonna be some. Changes in the front of the. Hold it, correct.
Yeah, landscaping, that's part of this approval.
Yeah.
I didn't bring the whole file. Oh wait.
Yeah, hang on.
Nevermind.
I'm I'm pulling it up on my screen shortly here, Beth.
No, that's okay, you don't need to. I've got a hard copy. There's the three. Okay, there's the two, just do phone on the motions. Do all both of it, right?
Yeah.
We're just doing a sense of courtesy right now. Okay, yeah. Two.
Two.
Yeah.
Two.
Yes. Yeah. These, but they're. He's got a question. Okay.
Well, so.
Okay.
Next item, 17 Sydney Road, practice.
Um, I believe that when we left it at the last meeting, I asked all of you to review. Um, the application again in regards to the TOD regulations and the TOD plan. And we're gonna do that and come back for a final discussion and hopefully a consensus on the decision pertaining to the second page.
Very changes made in driveways since we last saw them.
No.
With no checks.
No. Not the public hearing exposed.
Do we need a consensus for an actual vote?
Suppose they have a work session?
I'm just curious.
No, it's not an actual vote, it's consensus and then that gives me direction as to what we want.
Yeah, just check.
And I think it it caused a little bit more frugitation of what you discussed at the last meeting too.
Absolutely.
If that helps get to get it going a little bit.
I don't have any questions.
Do you want them to come back to you?
Yeah, yeah, sort of the, Ken looks in the brain, he's all that.
Yeah. I'm all done.
Can I say it's important to?
I just, I'm sorry.
I think it's important to discuss whatever, you know, some of the comments that some of you had things to say at the last meeting. Some of you didn't have anything to say at the last meeting, you wanted to wait till this evening. So it's important to even mention some of the comments that you might have made at last meeting.
Come back, come back to me.
All right, I'll. Yeah, I'll start. Um, so I was hopeful that they were gonna come back. Now, I had the impression that they were gonna adjust the driveway possibly, but they didn't. Is it that homeowner in the back left corner where there's that emergency egress has made it perfectly clear that he's never gonna create access while he's alive and living there. So to have these, yeah, if you put in a road to nowhere, seems like a waste where you could put in a couple extra parking spots back there and put in a second entrance that comes out more on which I I feel like that would, you know, that entrance and exit, you might make the traffic flow easier. Uh, maybe alleviate some of the traffic concerns, what he, uh, some of the sightline concerns. That was, that was kind of a fall behind. Really conflicted about the whole application, to be honest, because it does fit regulations that are written pretty, pretty well and it could actually be bigger, it could be a lot bigger. In my opinion, where. I was feeling my own concerns with just the driveways and how to change anything.
I would agree that the building meets the requirements, but I don't think it's in spirit of what's intended for TOD. No disrespect to people here who worked on TOD, this lock being part of it, I think destroys that here. You know, I feel I have a duty to citizens, much like myself, if this was being built next to me, I'd be, I'd be, I'd be at arms. I'd be here at every meeting like everybody asked. So I appreciate the, and I said for it, it's a great looking building, it's carefully thoughtfully designed, it just doesn't belong there. This spot was flipped and facing the train station and the access was over on a diamond somewhere and that became one big contiguous TOD. That might actually work, you know, it's a nice looking. Then it's kind of.
No, I'm sorry, I'm in your way.
Oh, that's okay. And you know, then then it would sort of fit with the whole concept, but I don't think the spirit of the TOD is to drop an apartment building in the middle of something. And I think you need, we need to look at the details of it, you know, it's talking about storefronts and aligning uh buildings to the street to, you know, it's making a cohesive plan, but not in a neighborhood, it's making a cohesive plan on a, you know, a more commercial street. That's why.
Okay, I, to be honest, that's. Now, we are, you know, looking at the regulations, which I've been meaning to talk. It says to create a walkable mixed use connected community in very tremendous mix of building type that are in keeping with the scale and character of Bethel. So I don't think this building does in that one area. And if I look at the regulations, our under building design, it says buildings under 100 feet long shall be broken down to a seal comparable to adjoining properties by building plan or elevation articulation. This building is 128 feet long, which is against this regulation here. So it doesn't meet the regulation and I think something has to be done there. And oh, yeah, the other thing for me that was so important is the fire department. How many, how many uh subdivisions and apartment buildings have we looked at? I could go downtown, but two big apartment buildings we've looked at. Everything has an emergency exit. When you have something assigned, you have to have the ability for the fire department, if, let's say if there was something blocking the front entrance of this building. There has to be that emergency exit somewhere, a second way for the fire department to get in. And I think that we're talking about life here and I think that that's important as well. That's, that's all I have to say today.
I thought see. So.
Do you get, so is that simple? Because he was. Not sure. Sure. Yes. First of all, this area is, is to me almost a gray area as far as including it in the TRD. I know originally when there was a plan to have a overpass over the railroad connecting this that side of Bethel to the train station made a lot of sense. And as the pro lines, it it's very close. But when I did the request of walking compared to the trains, that it's over a mile. So it's, it's.
Yes, technically, it could come off a mile, um, but whether that really
fits in with the whole idea of the transit oriented district, I'm, I'm not sure. And looking at the neighborhood, having the 30 units with potentially 60 people and 60 cars added to that little neighborhood, I just don't think that that, that works for the the town neighborhood or adds to the TOD plan. So I would go for something less. Multiple units.
Yeah, so. As, as I, I, you know, said here before, I, I, I believe in the building density downtown, that's where density belongs, it does belong in Stony Hill, it does belong in the Frank Preserve, it doesn't belong in Woodlands. The reason we have the services downtown is because that's where we want to be. Thinking about small businesses in the area, I think they want that also, but they want that for traffic. It's a challenging enough town to have a small business, I know from my experience, small business. So anything that. Helps, you know, that brings to downtown is, you know, is, is a good thing, it, it's, it's, it's good for everybody all around, you know, as far as the neighborhood. Of small businesses to drive, maybe more new businesses come in, building these storefronts, what have you. I certainly understand the concerns of neighbors. I know we've, uh, talked amongst ourselves about how it might be better to scale down the proposal. But what I'm gathering is that that's not acceptable, or that they're, they're, they're not willing at least at this stage to. Come out with a, a two build building plan or something that's a little smaller scale, something that's a little lower. So I, I, I don't know where we are on that, but you know, if that was, that, that would certainly be something else to consider. Aesthetics. It's so subjective, what looks good to one person does look good to another person. I, 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 I personally don't think it's, you know, it's that odd feeling of a building, but you know, if we start getting into. Into that, then that's, you know, that, 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 that's a, talk about your gray areas, that's, yeah, and that, that's a big one. It's. I've got, if you may, the question of commission to the, to the town is, you know, is there any, is this, you know, yay or day at this point? Or is there a possibility to? Provoke a smaller or revise plan? I mean, it sounds familiar, but if, if it's that clear, the one twenty eight feet versus a hundred. Uh, maybe, maybe that's it, I don't know.
There's two, uh, what I, I think at this point, because this application has, the public hearing has been closed. And so there are some statutory guidelines that you have to follow. There are one of two options that you can do. Uh, and the applicant can do it. Finish your discussion going down the line, but you always have the option. Tonight I'm looking for a consensus. Uh, a yay or a day. But anytime between now and when the final decision is made or the final resolution is presented to you, the applicant can always withdraw the application. Reconsider and come back with some revisions.
From a TOD point of view, I think it's important. And from an aesthetic point of view. Nice. Um, even if they took a whole floor off it, it's not gonna work. There's a lot of other potential profit making options that would make the place look bad. They're just not considering them and we have to decide whether we want to force the issue. Tell us.
Mr. White Knight.
One question I have is.
Can you hear me, Bob?
I have a question as to what happens if, uh. We deny this and he comes back with an eight thirty G.
This is true.
That's a possibility, the question is. Go ahead, say it again, Bob.
If we deny. This application. As, as a normal TOD application. It'd still come back under the TOD eight thirty G. Am I right?
That, um, I would say that is, um. That would be a challenge. And it would be challenged by the town. Because in this particular zone, the TOD, first of all, you're in a double R ten zone. But in the TOD overlay zone, there is a, an affordable housing regulation where it's mandatory that affordable housing be provided. And I, in my opinion, I would think that any court would frown on someone not. Abiding by the TOD regulations and going for an eight thirty G only for financial gain. That would be the only reason to do it. And I am sure, I'm positive that the town would challenge that. Because let's face it, the town has spent a lot of money on formulating our affordable housing regulations for almost every zone that exists within the town.
Okay, you're good, we got that out of the way, now.
That's just my opinion, Bob. It doesn't, you know, anybody could, can do it, but it's a lot of cost. There's a lot of costs associated with that.
Then you have the emergency exit. If we go to the emergency exit to the property line, true, it's not a through exit.
I'm sorry, Bob, I can't hear you.
If the golf property is ever developed, they could come back with an emergency exit coming the other way. Am I true?
Yeah. Can you, can you repeat that, Bob?
If we, if we get the emergency exit on this property. The way. Tommy Gallifer wanted it. And a golf property gets developed somehow, they could. Force them, we could force them to put an emergency exit to match up with it. So now you've opened up to, uh. You know, the, the, the other properties behind it.
That's correct. The dead end road of Ball Street.
Ball Street's a dead end road, but it'd be a way to get in and out of Ball Street if you needed to. Once they go, so golf property will, will be developed some point.
Yes. Probably.
I think TOD is working just fine. Okay, Ken, I'm done.
Thank you, Bob.
She was putting in regulations. You, your decision is based on the regulations still in. I will pursue that, but that. When I'm writing a resolution, whatever that resolution is, I'll be, I'll be quoting from the plan and the regulations. I'm just hoping.
Anybody?
Yeah, we feel it, it's like, it's like they're.
I'm, I'm.
No, it's, it's just all of that noise. It's just. Sit at the front. Sit closer.
I'm sure I got next to it.
No, no. We're almost like partners.
All the ones.
So tonight we're looking for a consensus.
You know.
They are yay.
Are we, are we?
That's what I'm looking for.
Are we ready to do that tonight? Or should we?
Yes.
Wait, we're, we're, we're gonna have to wait for Penny and the others the next week.
You're missing Penny and. If you review the, uh, the hearing. At the last meeting, I think you've heard from Penny as to her thoughts and parts to the application. She was pretty hopeful at the last meeting. Okay. Rich Tibbetts, I don't believe that Rich Tibbetts. Has not attended the hearings and therefore should not be seated in regards to this discussion.
You're absolutely right, I'm sorry, I was about to say. Yeah, I, I. So from this point of time, would you want?
User. I'm not texting.
For the record.
It's a puppy.
I, okay.
Um, anybody have time today? Calculator on their computer or their phone? It's on my computer.
I can get that, that's what you need.
Um.
There you go.
Give me sixty five days from August ninth, add sixty five days.
Okay.
And let me know what the date is. That's the, that's the drop dead date on the application.
Okay.
Are you a math major?
I am not.
That is Thursday, October thirteenth, Beth.
There you go, say. Good guess.
Thank you, David. All right, so the drop dead date is October thirteenth? Do, do I, if you wanna give.
We can wait until the next week.
No, no, we didn't want to though.
Why don't you do this? Why don't you give me a consensus tonight? I will put your thoughts down on paper. With the backing that you're looking for, you look at it at the next meeting. You work with it, you either like it or you don't like it. And then you make your final decision on October eleventh? So that's a Thursday. October eleventh. What do you think?
Yeah.
All right. Well, based on the regulation I found, uh, I would.
Show of hands, yes, all those in favor?
All those in favor, raise your hand.
Paul?
Aye.
Bob?
All those. Bob, you said yes?
Yes.
All those not in favor, raise your hand.
To clarify, Beth, this is just a consensus.
It is a consensus, yes.
Okay.
All right? Very good.
Here I am. On to new business. Seventy Stony Hill Road.
Okay, can you bring it up on the, on the, uh, screen just so they could get a visual? And show them.
Which, uh, which drawing should I use, Beth?
Use the architectural rendering, it's worth the price, it's worth the.
How about it? How's that, everybody can see that?
Yes.
Okay, at the quarter of Route six in Old Hollyville Road, where there used to be the old pediatrician office and the, um, former B and A office. Round building, kind of awkward, out of, out of sync. This is a news, uh, they're gonna add a second story to it, and it's not this building consisting of, of business, I believe, that retains double amount of care. And I, the commission, it's already sent out for referrals, and I'd like to schedule a public hearing for that on the twenty fifth of October. Twenty fifth. I'm gonna vote at the twenty fifth.
I'd like to make a motion to set a public hearing, our ability additions to existing structure and site plan approved at seventy Stony Hill Road. On October twenty fifth and then to set outdoor appropriate.
All right. All in favor?
I don't think it's necessary to show the drawings associated with the next, um, application, it's for six A Francis J. Hart Park. It is located next to the Bethel Power on the corner. It's the interior lot where you see there's been excavation, it's been sitting quiet for last year or two. Uh, there was new owner of the property, they're revising the site plan a little bit, dealing with, um, the size of the building. And it's, so it's out, I would like you to send it out for department reviews. And they'll commit into the big presentation, probably it, it does not require a public.
Except one if we voted on, uh, the, the software.
No, no. Just make a motion, if you don't mind, make a motion to defer the item.
I'll make a motion to defer the item.
Second.
I feel bad about, but it's regulations.
Oh, I can't believe this.
Two, two Wolf Pits Road, it's on the corner, the exit, I don't look. Two regulations. I just interpret that, of course. Two, the intersection of Wolf Pits Road and three oh two, where the light is, it's the first house on the right side, Mr. Taylor. What?
This is, this is for six, Beth.
Six Wolf Pits Road?
Yes.
Well, then don't go away anymore. Oh, Matt, he's a happy. He owns two also, two, four.
Yes.
Four and six. Anyways, um, Mr. Taylor has an old shed in the front yard, he is getting, moving the shed. And he would like to put a two car garage in his front yard. And according to your regulations, you need a public hearing, a special permit in order to put a two car garage in front of it. So I'd like to schedule that for Mr. Taylor, October eleventh. So he can get the matter taken care of, hopefully, if you agree with it. By the first cross.
Six Wolf Pits Road. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bob?
Aye.
Thank you. David, you're next, bond release.
David?
Playing video.
Hello, David. Stop partying, oh dear, dude, come on.
Amy, can you hear us, you're on mute.
I, I lost, I lost my audio, um, you may have to let me back in, Beth, one sec.
You're in, we can hear you, we can see you.
And we can see you. And we're on bond release.
I'm mute now.
You're back on mute.
This still seems really gonna work out.
Where's, where's supposed to be, it's my technical. Yeah, that's the irony.
You lost them all together.
This is water supporting up.
He's gone.
He's there because his purse is.
David!
Yeah, that's us.
You have to.
Yeah, they have to click on the blue button up at the top.
I can't see.
Yeah, there you go.
Hey, that's, that's him right there. Lower, lower.
Yeah, the lower right.
Lower right.
All right about that, guys, can you hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you now. Yes.
All right, David, let's go.
He keeps saying, can you hear me, when he disappears.
Spirits. He can't hear us, you might be able to chat in order to say that we were talking about the auto, audio.
I'm, I'm.
Are you there? Can you hear me now?
Can you hear me now?
Can you hear me now?
If you click on war. It's our chat.
Here. You want to do chat, let it. David McCall host. See if you're still. Again, let's, let's go forward. And if he comes in, you, you have the thing now, so you keep eye on there, I can't see that part.
Okay.
Alright, if you don't mind, Rob, I'm.
That's fine, no problem. If I'm not seated, it might as well be useful somehow.
There you go. Okay, in regards to tonight's meeting, there also, I, I told you over the weekend that we were, we were gonna have a discussion. You would, several of you would ask me to have a discussion on the TOD regulations, okay? Did I read that? Yes.
No. Special notes.
Everybody has copy of the data that I submitted to you in regards to the TOD regs? Okay, so just, just to refresh, some of this was included in.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I, I'm sorry about that, were you guys waiting for me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I, for some reason, my, my audio, uh, um, pointed out on my computer, so, uh, thanks for holding for me. So, uh, tonight, if, if we are in fact, uh, on bond releases, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, I have a request, uh, that I received on August twenty-fourth in the form of an email, uh, from a member of Oakwoods LLC, uh, Tim Draper. He had requested, uh, that the commission consider releasing an erosion and sedimentation control bond for nine Good Hill Road in the amount of eight thousand four hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty cents. I conducted a site inspection, uh, for his own compliance certificate of the property on June ninth, um, uh, with our town engineer, uh, James De Mayo. He, uh, has since verified that all of the soils on site are stabilized and in fact, uh, have seeds growing on them. So, um, unless you guys have any other, uh, questions that I, uh, can answer for you, um, you know, I, I, um, I think the commission would be in a position to, uh, to release the bond tonight.
Yes, most of you released the bond and then.
Make a motion that we, we should survive for Oakwoods LLC nine Good Hill Road in the amount of eight thousand four hundred and forty-two, given based on the inspection done by. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so basically what I did was I, a little bit of data pertaining to the TOD. That is, I hope will be helpful with anything that you wish to discuss further. But I thought it was important for tonight to at least spend a few minutes talking about density. Permeous surface in regards to memo I previously sent you, so you have an idea of what you're talking about when you're approving some of these applications and you can also discuss a little bit or see more of the existing qualities that we have in the TOD and what the needs may be pertaining to making it better. And I felt that's the number one need in making a TOD project. For in character with the surrounding neighborhood is the, what I define as useful open space. Um, when you're dealing with some of your sections of town along Greenwood Avenue, along, um, uh, Grand Street, you know, some of your older neighborhoods, Blackman Avenue and such. I have a problem when I'm driving down Greenwood Avenue and I see in front of the old Driscoll Office Building, that that is their usable open space area where they have lawn chairs and a table, it looks like it's, you know, you have a barbecue and you're sitting in the front yard. Eating and spending your recreational time there. So what I did was, this is eighty South Street, which some of you know and some of you don't know. It's on the corner of South and Taylor Avenue with Bethel. It's the Verdi's property and they're proposing three buildings here. So what I did was, and I'm sorry, it's, it's a work session, so I, I couldn't get it up online, Bob, for you to see, but I can at least email you the map afterwards. So what I did was, I, I had David, this is one lot, okay? The yellow is the building and I'll turn around and show you all if you wish to see it.
Okay, we tell this, move it right there, stand with.
Yes. Across the ground, we're trying to follow. Okay. So this is the building itself, okay? And this is, the blue is what we call a permeus area, it's either asphalt or sidewalk. Alright, so when you, and what I did was, I had David go, uh, put to scale what we would call open space. So this is ten percent and this is twenty percent, alright? So as you look at this. And I'm gonna send this around to all of you and I want you to all try and find ten percent of open space on this property. That would be what we would consider useful.
Useful.
Space, okay? So I mean, obviously you can't, but I, I just want you to get a feel for what ten percent of a lot would be. Is it doable, is it feasible, how little it is, how much more it is? And I just think it's important because what you want is, you want a green space to be always in one area. So you're providing outdoor amenities associated with either an apartment building or a home. In the downtown area. Get it?
Yeah.
I mean, and unfortunately, this is one of those properties where there is not even a ten percent of usable space that is.
But that's the point.
There's spots located. Well. And I just thought it was a good example, so you would have a better idea because some of you, again, this is all you guys offered to me. Some of you expressed concern about having some land available for that type of thing. And again, I was making, say you choose to make requirement for open space within a TOD project. What that does is, by using the little squares that I gave you. It limits the density associated with the plaza. It either eliminates the density or it eliminates the permeus area. For example, if you were to take a portion of that and put it in the parking lot area. There would not be parking requirements to the amount of units that it has. That's another way to control density. Instead of, you know, saying, oh my God, I don't want thirty units, I don't want twenty, I don't want. What you do is you control it by the amenities associated with the development. That's another way to, besides, we do same.
But an amenity like that is on private property, so.
Yes.
That, that's different than what I would consider.
I agree.
Public open space.
I agree.
Public open space.
It's considered useful amenity space.
Amenity space for the people who are, who have rights of ownership or, or rights to be there, but not for the, not for the community.
Again, it was just a term. Right, right. That's a good point, but it's not, no, it isn't. Because in larger developments, when you talk about TOD. It's a good phrase to use and that's why we do this, because we talk about public amenities. In large developments, that's hope it's useful space, um, associated, uh, needs of the town with the development. So that's a good way to do, I think that's a better way of phrasing it. It's open space, I agree. Open space to me is.
Yeah, open, open space to ten people, years is an open space, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah. Right, right. Oh, sorry, I have my back to you also.
I can hear you.
What did you call the space? I didn't hear it.
Oh, I, well, I said public open space versus private open space.
Right. But this is, it's amenities, you know.
It's a, yeah.
We'll have to, but you understand the concept.
Well, you have, you have people living in this building and they, they want to go outside with their, or their children want to, but it's a place where they can, not, that's not a parking lot, yeah.
So that's something you want to pursue?
Yeah, definitely.
Absolutely.
It's another tool.
Yeah, but, so, just playing devil's advocate, you have this patchwork then of private property, open spaces, you know, in, in, you know, fifty years down the road, what, that plays out. Would it be better to think about common open spaces that we can create as a town, I mean, whether the town purchases, purchases it or develops it, expands an existing park like Overlook or Parklo, you know, whatever, you know, mechanism, to create spaces that are still accessible to those places? That allow the density that, you know, I'm a, said before, a big fan of, you know, for, standpoint of, you know, being retail space and, and a walk-in community and all that stuff. You know, in, in my book, that's, that's more valuable to the community, to everyone, than these little, this patchwork.
No, and I, I understand what you're saying because I think overall that was the base of the concept when we started this.
Yep.
But I'm seeing.
Or the open space fund that's been around for years.
Well, that was another thing too, you know.
Which exists to purchase.
Requiring of that.
Space, right.
But I'm only basing it on, on the TOD projects that we've had. And, and those really are the small pieces along Greenwood Avenue.
Yep.
And so when I look at those, I see a deficit. You know, and pay, you know, there's two ways you got, you can go with this. Um, I see a deficit created by the amount of permeus surface that's needed, the amount of pavement that they have to meet as far as requirements for parking. With those units, and so all you're leaving is that front lawn and the rest of it is going to be paved in the back. And I don't think that was something that we thought of either when we were doing this. But then that goes to, um, it almost brings it to the next level, which would be, there are certain, I, I believe that when this all started, you know, there were su- certain areas that were targeted for larger development or more densely developed. And those areas were commercial. Uh, uh, and industrial on Grant Avenue and Diamond Avenue. Everything else were pieces to the plan. And within those instances. I believe that that's when you would have gotten more into contributions to public amenities. For example, you know, say they, there's five acres over here on Grant, you want to do development there, well, you have to give us a target. And again, talking about public amenities in the town. I can, I recall that over here at ten Worcester Street. We wanted to purchase, there was a, a movement, again, let's purchase the property, let, let's put it in the toolbox because municipality twenty-three years now, where are we gonna be? Need a park, the park, we need this, we need that, the town chooses now. And so I have to look at, I feel I, as staff, I have to look at other ways for us to get these necessities or amenities that we need. Because the town gives us, uh, I wanna say pushback, but, you know, they're not as. So. They don't have the foresight, I guess. Some people, a lot of people, don't get me wrong.
Well, how do we make them that, of course.
You try, that's what, that's what you do, you try. You know, but I mean, like with this piece, yeah, what's the word, slack? Two out of three said they're not interested. So anyways, I'm looking at other ways to improve people's living area. That was one of the deficits I saw and, and Rob, you're absolutely, I, I agree with you too. I do think that we need to have a place where they can put a chair in it. And we don't have that. And some of these about, you know, I'm not seeing that.
We're seeing more and more of that sort of thing.
I think two twenty Greenwood Avenue, two fifty-three Greenwood, um, uh, the other ones, I can't think of the top of my head. Where the gallery, where, um, the dark first.
Oh, yes, yeah.
You know, those type of homes, they're taking advantage, as they should, of the TOD by with the little barns in the back and things of that nature, little one-bedroom apartments. Two units in a bar and, and making architectural pleasing for the town. But it's still missing, it's, it's some of those areas, it's all pavement.
It's all blacktop. It's all blacktop.
And that's, that's where I, that's, it is a minor problem. But it is, I am seeing more. So that was one thing I felt was important. With larger developments, I think that it's gonna come a time, I don't think it's future in my time, I think it's gonna be something major coming over here on Grant Avenue. But I think it's important because the developer's not picking up on the need. If you, if you want to come in here and use the density that we possibly be allowed to be to use over by the train station and such. There has to be, there's a give and take about with that and the regulations in TOD made that very clear. So it's gonna be parks, it's gonna be public amenities in some sort or another. Or it's gonna be contributions to the town in order to create this public maintenance. One other thing you guys talked about, just to get off of that for a few minutes, and that you don't have to decide anything or motions or stuff, but I think it's coming. I think you guys have seen, we, we haven't seen that much development in TOD, that's important. Okay? Try to thought. That's the density, that's the need to. I. In the TOD zone, you have an allowance to four stories. Now, several of you have talked to me about reducing that from four stories to three stories. Four stories was, was designated more for Diamond Avenue and Grant. And I. No.
No.
Paul is just right. I think if somebody came in and wanted to develop everything, but I would go four stories, I would assume that outside of me also telling them it's not a good idea you do this. Because it's not consistently architecturally, characteristically exist. So anyways, and I've talked to enough of you where the consensus of the commission was that you were looking to change that. So we'll take that off the table. Um, the other thing I just wanna mention. There was a few other things that, uh, I just brought to your attention. Because you all, some of you speak to your neighbors, work downtown, hear comments from other people in town and things like that. So what I, I thought it was important for you all to remind you, because some of you are newer members of the commission, that since the, the TOD was adopted in twenty sixteen, the master plan. Regulations were adopted in twenty eighteen. So that's six years ago, right? We've had forty units within the TOD built during that time period, during six years. And eight of those units are affordable houses. TOD is getting blamed for many issues in town, uh, dealing with traffic. For example, it's being one. And right now, we are finished, we just finished up, you'll notice here, I gave you a little bit on the hard to see data collection, probably did the data collection um, for the parking and traffic studies. Now, we say traffic study, but it's really focused on the Greenwood Avenue three oh two. It's, uh, dealing with speed. It's dealing with road diets, it's what we call it, things of that nature. Uh, skidding up roadways, dealing with traffic, uh, speed limits, things of that nature. So there's a little report on that. And lastly, uh, dealing with school enrollments. I gave you some statistics on our larger developments or where the kids are coming from, because that's another comment that has come out of my and has been discussed.
I have a question on that, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Is, is the, the numbers of students, is that as of right now or is that over the six years that?
No, that's over the spring.
That's, so that's, that's, that's current.
That's a, that's great. That's great. So, and basically what I, I wanted you all to understand is that the, the additional students or whatever is going on with the school system, number one, schools have never, school system has never approached. Commission saying, hey, we're having real issues with schools. Commission saying, hey, we're having real issues with schools, with student enrollment, things of that nature. And again, it's it's trying to tie it back to TOD, school enrollment doesn't have anything to do with TOD in my opinion. Uh, over the years, there's been in every single zone. That you govern as far as zoning regulations are concerned. Um, there's children associated and I just found it very interesting that that whole process. Which is in the in the uh, they use the design conservation district in order to build those. Has seven kids coming out of that development. And it's sixty two homes.
Yeah.
Uh.
But don't we want kids at town?
Summit, at the summit. Again, the summit.
That's a, that's a problem.
Up on the hill. Only has thirty five kids and that's two hundred and thirty five units.
What happens?
And so it's, so what I'm what I'm trying to convey to you all. Zoning wise, you know, people have an impression or a perception. That all the kids are coming from, all of the summit, there's twenty thirty five condos, this is where the kids are coming from. No, that's not where they're coming from.
No.
Uh, it was just so interesting.
Yeah, you're in the Cocker Square.
Getting this, Cocker Square is a hundred and thirty seven units.
I'm shocked. Only forty five kids.
Forty five kids.
Yes.
But again, it's a different type of zoning, you know, that's the point I'm trying to make, the the various developments at CCD, you have six, BRD. But when you look at it from an overall perspective. It's the single family homes. One thing I do want to do though, in regards to the TOD. I need my water. Is to break it up in, to see um, one and two bedroom units. Are there any kids? Because another question came up. About um, oh, thank you. Um. Kids in one bedroom units, well, we have enough one bedroom units in the TOD now, I want to check with the landlords and see what we have going on. In regards to that. Um, so I I just, you know, this is, just take this information, keep working on what you're you're doing and change, and if you've got any offer. For me to look into more, please tell me, I'd be more than happy to. Once, any other regulations that have to be done on TOD? For TOD, sure.
Is there a way to, I think the whole, the idea of TOD, if you boil it down, is foot traffic is downtown. You know, based on commuting to the the train, but it's really about revitalizing, getting foot traffic downtown. Is there a way to require any? Any development that they need to be connected by sidewalks to the downtown area? Because if you have a somewhere, um, you had a development come in that's on the outskirts of TOD and it's not connected by sidewalks. You're kind of discouraging walking and it's not in in the feeling of TOD. You know, like uh.
Yeah, you're right.
Like like the the, like if the if the if we're gonna be counting on this footbridge over the tracks. And then we're, and then push come shove, state shoots it down, MetroCard shoots it down, well, now we've already approved the project. Um, you know, banking on that on that bridge, they're already building it, the bridge is never gonna happen, there's no sidewalks. You know, it's just kind of, I want to make sure the infrastructure is there, as simple as simple, something as simple as sidewalks. Um, the infrastructure is there to support the development before the development is approved and built. Because then we all know, once that happens, they're always never gonna get what you need. That's just, this is a thought.
I would um.
I'm using sidewalks as an example, the footbridge, you know.
I think some of those are very good.
Landing crossings.
That's a very good point.
Traffic lights, if if needed. The I I just believe the infrastructure should be there before a project is approved. Um. Because I again, I'm just afraid of approving it with the hopes and dreams, yeah, it's looking good and it doesn't happen. And now. You're stuck with it, so that's just, that's just a lot of time. Something we can look into.
Absolutely, um, I think that. What would help in regards to this. That um, there are design drawings, there's there's drawings. Funding that is available, that the town is using. To increase sidewalk areas, to improve existing sidewalks that we already have. If you, and and in regards to Diamond Avenue, just so you have a better understanding, if you haven't been down there recently. Back in whenever, and I wasn't even on. I wasn't even around, I'm looking at Katie Grant.
Yeah. Was I going to?
When hardwood floors went in.
What?
In the storage area.
Yep.
Part of the site plan approval.
Sure.
With sidewalks.
Yeah.
Because it's always been the commission's philosophy that sidewalks will get it, put it eventually.
Yeah.
And it will connect and lead somewhere. And ever to give an area to town, for example, on Brad Street, and then we redo the sidewalks there.
Yeah.
And there's also communication involved, dealing with improvements along the uh, diet. And um.
And and that's great, but I'm just like, if, you know, we'll be into here, say. Here's down the road, someone comes in, wants to develop that sub storage and they put up something for TOD. And now they build their, we require them to put their sidewalk within a sidewalk nowhere. You know, you have to come off the sidewalk to walk that quarter mile down the road.
I will always disagree with you on this.
Sorry.
Oh, you know, I will too, because we've seen this, we've seen the sidewalks to nowhere, but then you see sidewalks to nowhere and that.
And Katie will. And then it goes somewhere else.
No, I and eventually, yes, but there's also sidewalks that don't. And I'm just, what I'm saying is, I believe before you approve a a bigger scale project, the infrastructure needs to be there.
Okay, but along the same lines to the construction, there are public amenities associated with that and um, give and take. Between the town and a developer, say, that's walking into the door.
Yeah.
And considerations have to be given in regards, yeah, I don't need to be clearly justifying. To sidewalks. This is great, I love it.
See, I didn't realize that.
But it's a good point, it's a very good point, and I think there's ways to to get what you want.
Yeah.
Along with the development. That is proper.
Yeah. Thanks for the statistic, that's, this is.
It's very, it all does, it makes you think.
It's it's perspective, right? Yeah.
It's very, you know, that's what it, that's the purpose, is to just make it, it's not to give the themes or anything like that.
Yeah.
Trying to give you food to block based on where we've been and where we're going and what you hear.
So it's important. Always important.
And this is a good conversation. I think I'd like to turn a little bit more on the. Useful public amenity or good space.
Yeah.
I think that's, I still think that's important. In certain areas, it's had that, I would say, I've also been thinking about, and I'll just throw this out for further thought. Think about in the future is the possibility of having two overlay zones. Two distinctive TOD overlay zones. One dealing with strictly residential areas, the RMO, the double R ten. The R ten.
The move, the ones further out.
It doesn't matter where they're located, it's just dealing with, and those, because those properties for the most part are developed. So you're talking about putting in the little cottage in the back for the barn or something along those lines when it's older. And then clearly using your industrial zone. Basically, that's what it is. Diamond Avenue and Grant Avenue is the industrial zone for your larger scale developments, because let's face it, those are the larger pieces of property. So why don't you think about that? And we'll talk about that more next week. As a possibility, just think about it. Yeah, yeah, I'll work on that. Okay.
Sounds good.
That's all I have, I'm not talking, thank you very much.
You ready?
I do.
How much?
No.
Yeah, I am on the agenda next, comments from the commission. If we have anything more to offer. I think I've talked out. And then we have. Public input. Public, you want to put in?
Uh.
None in public over there.
Name and address, please.
Uh, shit. Sorry.
Dave, Dave did want to come first?
Sorry, sorry.
He makes kind of profit cater.
Don't be sorry, Dave, you have something to say? Chair? Go, go ahead, please.
Uh, the J. Liberty Eight Great Streets, so, since you're talking about transit, I need just a gesture of. Pretty reassuring to this year. And.
And you got it from the library.
And I did, I, they got it, right. So just a couple of things, as long as you're thinking about uh, things to incorporate. Some ideas in the book. Um. Parking, I understand that you reduce the parking in order and give increased sense of it. And I understand why you do that, and I think that's fine, but the trade off is that in that whole, the reality is, we don't have. Such a expensive bus system that is going to pick up slack. We don't have, you know, the trains go limited, you know, directions, so they're not picking up the slack. For when residents want to go to Costco, or when our citizens want to go to the mall, or you want to take a glass over the transfer station. So the town, perhaps in conjunction with the developers, could come up with a uh. Alternate thing, so you know how the senior center has a little bus?
Mm-hmm.
Could the town? Get a bus that would be scheduled to, you know, on Saturdays, there's gonna be a run possible. Or there's gonna be a run to, so that people might. Consider doing their shopping where they don't have to sit at the bus stop, you know, and then the ice cream is melting, they can't, you know, you can't grocery shopping for the bus. So there needs to be some kind of an alternate. Walker.
Is the breakfast walkers, stuff like that?
Uh, I'm not sure what that means.
Okay.
But that's that's.
Yeah, I don't know, I've heard that they do.
Um.
That's something to look at.
Bundle parking from uh rentals. So say everybody, every every rental, you know, the building allows one parking space for each unit. If you don't need it, then your rent is reduced. If you need more, then your rent goes up, but it would be, you know, assigned. Um. Internal trip catch, so if it's mixed use, the commercial, commercial uh use needs to be something that supports not using a car. So maybe it's childcare, or maybe it is computer services, or something that is going to save you a car trip. The same with, if it's downtown, you're trying to encourage people to walk to the grocery store. Could there be, you know, the the. Provide like the little shopping carts that you walk on the street with um at cost to encourage walking to the grocery store.
And food already does that. Food, I see people, I've seen them, I'm sorry, I go over to um. August down, uh, you know, three, three times we hit it, and I feed the residents and they're pushing Biffle Food, the little, the new little carts. Back from Biffle Food to consider a partner. But they do, they do Biffle Food away. I mean, I think they like.
We'll find out tomorrow.
Yeah.
I'll be sure.
Heartful of it may be going down.
Which I'm going to credit him with, credit you with, uh, you know.
Tell me.
Um, pedestrian environment, it's got to be direct, well connected visually, it's. So that's what you guys are talking about. Um. Ride sharing, either a formal cooperative or, you know, like the. The companies that come in to do that, you know, that are expensive. Fan pools, um, secure bicycle storage, um. In the house, you know, so it's covered. Um, and another thing I said in the book is, you really need original plan. That it's got to, if you're using transit, you're talking about trains, that not only on the residential end. It's got to be a quarter mile or a half mile, but you also at the other end, you've got to have a way for those people to get to their jobs. Because if it's not for me yet, it ain't for them. So there was a whole lot in this book and I just want to say, it's a good read, um. Nineteen ninety nine.
The library now has it.
Thank you.
I'm done.
Thank you.
City McCorkin down nineteen Elton Avenue. First of all, I just want to give the all kudos for revisiting the TOD and I think it's great, everything that you're talking about is excellent. And it gave me a little resounding hope. Um, and I also, it's a question you have to answer now, but my understanding from reading the TOD is that one of the requirements is that the infrastructure is in place prior to approval. Now, I could be wrong, but they're they're very specific, that's my understanding. I also, this is just, you know, FYI, I went to this amazing, it was an event last night in New Canaan, it was Bob Stefanowski and his Freddie G. And um, there was a congressman who represents New Canaan, but also the executive director of Sweet House. And uh, the New Canaan Housing Authority Director, and it was about eight thirty G. And it was, it really blew my mind because it's, you know, the way that they explained it was really great and um. You know, that's something that needs to be reviewed because the the whole upshot is that. It's one size fits all for all the towns and you can't possibly meet that that seat, that, I mean, some places.
That's correct. We know.
Well, I know you know this, but imagine, you know, I just feel like that, you know, seen the light.
Are they offering a different concept?
No, well, well, Stefanowski's ideas, they're really killing it, gets it together, and I actually think that would be poss, that would be great. I know you don't think so, but how could they, well, I can't get into it right now, but. But. I know, and it's it's like nineteen eighty nine, but here's, here was the thing that really struck me. You don't get credit for, um, you know, Uncle, Uncle Frank's garage apartment. You don't, you don't, but you get half a credit for seeing your house.
You get nothing.
Oh, I think they bumped it up to half of, that's not, okay.
I know where you're going.
Yeah, it's all money. So I'm just saying that there's some inequities there and, you know, they use the example of Stockland's Connecticut, where no one's developed anything in us in thirty years. So they can never meet that and we can never meet it, really, how how, I'm just curious, how much of the percent, the ten percent, how much do we even have? Double probably three, two.
We have no.
Oh, my, okay.
We're one of the highest levels.
Okay. Well, that's also.
I can't recall off the top of my head.
And just as far as, you know, um, working with developers, you know, I mean, with seventeen, with, you know, we're all. I was thinking that, uh, you know, it's like a combative relationship and, you know, there's. People have to be open to negotiation and I I think that that's something that it's happened with um, just this, the idea of. Uh, you know, the development, especially TOD, is that it becomes adversarial immediately rather than people being willing to negotiate. And that that's troubling, that to me sets a really bad tone. And, you know, I'm not gonna lie, I can make a load of bear because I saw thirty units in a three story building in my little neighborhood. But I just think that there is, you know, maybe a group of negotiation there and that's it. Thank you for listening, I know it's all old news to you.
I want to speak, but I have to take my mask off.
I'm sorry, just take your mask off, we can.
Okay, name and address.
Jan Moy, ten thousand Downing Avenue, I'm sorry, my husband has from Canada and I never take my mask off.
That's okay.
Can you give your name again?
Sorry, your name again, Jan Moy, Kitty?
Jan Moy.
Jan Moy, ten Diamond Avenue.
Okay.
There you go.
I'm gonna have no voice tomorrow.
Yeah, I have a. Comment, a couple comments, a question.
Okay.
I've lived on Diamond.
Hold on one second, I'm gonna turn on the air.
That'd be nice.
Then we give your.
Let's rent the edge of the night.
Although I want the air. Take out the air while we have a little spin.
That loud, man, sorry.
I've, uh, I've lived on Diamond Avenue for thirty seven years. And that project and the whole urban planning thing is a big discussion for another day. But I do have um, common questions about seventeen Whitney.
Oh, no. I'm awfully sorry. We have all these state statutes and state laws that we have to follow.
Right.
And we had a public hearing regards to Whitney, and it closed. So that means that from now, from the point, from this point forward, that we cannot take any more testimony regarding seventeen Whitney Road.
Okay, can I ask a question?
About seventeen Whitney Road, you can certainly call me in the morning and ask me a question, but you cannot ask the commission any questions at this time.
Would you say that's closed, do you mean it's decided, it's over?
It's not decided.
Public hearing.
There is statutory requirements, and
I understand.
People can't talk to the commission, it's like being in a courtroom, think of them as being a jury.
Yeah.
They should not have any communication with anybody until they make their decision. That's how the rule works, I'm so sorry.
I will make a comment. Several people have brought up things tonight that I really can echo, and thank you.
Thank you. We could actually make comments about Diamond Ave and talk about that, that's open to Diamond Ave.
Diamond Avenue, there's no application for the commission at this point.
So then there's not much to talk. We could make, give us.
You can say what you want, you can speak about.
Seventeen Farnum Hill.
I'm sorry.
Paul Hopko, H O P C O, seventeen Farnum Hill. Um, I've lived in that house for thirty years, half my life, I'm sixty years old, and um they're gonna have a fight on their hands, I'm just letting you folks know. Um, trying to make a downtown area and a residential area, I know there's half industrial, I understand that, which by the way, uh, Mr. Kellogg, when he tried to do the office buildings there, and we fought that, I'd like to comment him, he's not here, but he did a wonderful job with low lighting, quiet, that, I'm retired now, my wife and I retire this year, and I sit on my porch at ten o'clock in the morning, and I hear that little song, you hardly hear it, I hear the train, I hear the birds. For the next four years, if that project is passed, I'm not gonna be hearing that, I'm gonna be hearing a lot of other things, as we can imagine. Um, it kind of disgusts me to live in a town, I grew up in the city of Bridgeport, I don't wanna be living in the city of Bethel. Okay, it's the town of Bethel, and I've enjoyed that for thirty years, I've had a good run. There's four people, I'm sorry, four single family homes, one person sitting right next to me, that was purchased just recently, within the last two years, those four people, if they even know about it, some of us do, hopefully they do, but when I start hearing about this type of project, where every downtown in my life that I've ever driven down is on a main road, not downside streets, I don't know if you people consider it, but I sure do, Grand Street, Farnum Hill where I live, um, uh, High Street, those are all side streets, that's not a downtown, if you wanna connect a magical, golden uh sidewalk to connect this downtown with that, good luck, cuz I think that's ridiculous. So, I'm just letting you know, there's gonna be a fight ahead for that project, we're gonna drum up a lot of stuff. Um, I think I have one thing that we know about that happened when Kellogg tried to do what he did, and it helped shoot down that project, and I have no problem with what he put in, I think it was the most wonderful thing to live at night and just have darkness and quiet, peace and quiet, not living in Bridgeport, like when I heard sirens, I didn't hear gunshots back then, it was a long time ago, but you did hear a lot of guff, because you were pretty close to Main Street, and I don't hear anything on Greenwood Ave down at the bottom of the hill on Farnum Ave, because it's just a town, not a city, and I keep stressing that. So, I just wanna let you folks know, it's been wonderful living here for thirty years, I hope I have another thirty years, God willing, but I pray to God that it's been, it'll be as quiet and as peaceful as it's been, and not a, a, a major uproar turning into a town into a city. Being a watershed, say, I don't even know how, a watershed community, I don't even know how this project could even come to fruition, but uh, we'll try, we'll, we'll be around. You'll see us more for that process. Thank you, I just wanted to give you my piece of lovely town, lovely town, that's it.
What about, uh?
There's a hand raised.
Out there. Yes, um, out, uh, I can't, I can't read it. Say, Allison in St. George?
St. Germain.
I can't say it, I told you.
Allison, St. Germain has her hand raised.
Okay, thank you, David.
Hi, y'all, I'm sorry, I've been listening in from away, um, I just wanted to thank you for the conversation, can you hear me?
Na- name and address, please, Allison?
Sure, Allison, St. Germain, fourteen Elgin Avenue.
Thank you.
So, thank you so much for the conversation tonight, it's been really interesting to listen to the comments. Um, a couple of pieces that were talked about were um, our regional transportation, and I'm still up for that challenge to try to ride the bus to get to Ridgefield, cuz we know we can't do that from here. Um, but I would like to also find out about um, how um some of the traffic and health and safety issues will impact any potential developments that come before the commission, and I know that the police commission and um, the, the fire marshal's office, um, I've directed questions to them, asking about traffic studies and things, but if this commission, the planning and zoning, don't seem to get a lot of information back from those departments to help inform your decisions about approval or not of projects, um, what uh, would you do if you want more information? Um, you know, especially in, we're talking a lot about traffic and uh, different, you know, side streets versus main streets, which obviously our main streets in Bethel are state roads, so we have state, uh, well, we have the state that we have to answer to, so I guess that would be, um, you know, from my perspective as a resident, I know where to direct my questions to, but for you as a commission, if you don't seem to get a full report, or you just get a line in, in minutes, um, would you ask more questions, and especially to help with these decisions? So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll say something that's not about seventeen Whitney.
Oh, yes. Give your name and, and address again?
Yeah. Jan Moy, ten Diamond Avenue. Um. I got a frantic text from one of my neighbors the other day, which led me to go back and re-watch the presentation for the nine eleven project, which is a great name. And I knew it wasn't going to be limited to just nine and eleven. Doctor Moy and I have been working in our house for all thirty seven years. We decided to build rather than leave our neighborhood for five different reasons. We loved it, we loved the people, it's the most ethnically, racially, societ- socially and economically diverse street in town, and it always has been, and it's been really interesting. And so, you know, we're, we're bidding out right now driveway drainage and we're replacing air conditioning systems, we're thinking about grandchildren running around our house in a few years. So, it's an understatement to say that it was like a gut punch to hear on that presentation that somebody else is dreaming about my house, and they wanna take it down. And they wanna take down all the houses in my neighborhood. Now, you've paid me, I suppose, and I could leave, but I could buy, I mean, in all modesty, I could buy any house in Bethel. Any house. And I chose it not to. I can't take my neighbors with me. I mean, we thought about moving instead of building, and building and adding, and some people know my house, and it's always under construction. It's the neighborhood, it's, it is the walkability and the closest, closest to everything, and we really appreciate that. But I don't even want to live in the houses that were for sale up Farnum Hill that maybe were more finished than mine, because my neighbors aren't there. So, uh, we're gonna talk a lot about this coming up, but I was led to believe when the TOD, he was going through, I was told, if somebody knows, you should know better, and then I trusted that we needed the TOD so that more industrial stuff wouldn't go in across the street from my house. And I was led to believe that I was voting for something that was gonna be a benefit to me, not a threat. And someday I'll talk to you about threats to homes and my husband's and my family's history. Not tonight. But I, I'm threatened, you've threatened me, you've threatened my home, you've threatened my family.
Hey ma'am, we haven't threatened anyone, and we totally, totally have sympathy, and I think your comments, you've made a very, very good point, and a very strong point about your concern for your home, but please, I, I tend to be the defender, you were going in a direction that I really would wish that you wouldn't at this point.
Okay, no, I, but, okay, I don't feel threatened by you guys. This concept, for me, I'm making the presentation for D B Z. His dreams were so offensive. One of my neighbors, I think he's an original owner, he's in his eighties, he heard about this. And he looked at me today, he's a black man, an old black man. He today with a sad eyes. And he said to me, okay, they can give me money, where am I gonna go? And what he was saying to me was, where am I gonna go to die? So, you guys think about these things that he's pursued, this plan.
This, this developer, uh, I don't know who, um, and, and I'm gonna be quick. I, I'd like to give him a plot in Ridgefield and have three surrounding uh roads that, around this big piece of property, and see with all their money and their influence and connections in Ridgefield, I would bet a million dollars that I don't even have, that that project would never go through because of who they're dealing with, Bethel, along Diamond Ave, I don't know about any of you folks, but I'm certainly not rich, but um we're gonna, we're gonna have a fight on our hands, and we're not threatening you, we're threatening the developers. I, I don't know how much more. Eat up of our town to, to make money.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else on the line?
Nope, no hands raised.
David, do you see anybody else?
Uh, Nico Jordan had his hand raised a while ago, but has since lowered it, I'm not sure if he has any comment he still wishes to offer.
Um, I'm here, David, hi, hi, everybody.
Name and address, please?
Nick, uh, Nico Jordan, twenty-two Wolf's Fifth Road, Bethel. Um. I don't really wanna add too much at this point, um, I just appreciate what the meeting that's going on, um, and all of you guys' comments and work, and I will find another time and avenue to uh, talk about what I wanted to talk about, so, thank you.
All right, any other comments?
Fawn McNabb, M A C, N A B, and fallen like a baby deer. Fourteen Diamond Avenue. Directly across the street. We are the house that isn't gonna notice the construction going up. My gentleman friend and I just bought that house um, a year and a half ago, although he has lived in it ten years prior, uh, twelve years prior to the purchase. Uh, we uh, work hard, we get up at five in the morning, we still have ten years left to, to work, um, before we retire. Um. And we get up at five in the morning, and so we'll probably be, we go to bed pretty early. Um, the, the nightlife that's proposed, the music, the Farnum Hill extension is the main road. Um, the, it, it, what, one parking space per, so that's what, five hundred parking spaces? Um, Diamond Avenue is peaceful and quiet, and the wonderful diverse neighborhood, the kids on the street, um, the, the cats running around, um, the deer and all the animals, and the, the, next to the school gym, and the crickets, um, the patio is the best room of the house. All of this is gone, all of our peace, um, uh, everything that we thought we bought, if we wanted to live in Toll Brothers by the New York Line, we would have bought in Toll Brothers by the New York Line. We didn't, we wanted a quiet community. Um, we've got the kids with the bikes and the skateboards, and um, I, this is just a monstrosity.
Okay, ma'am, I, we appreciate, we appreciate your comments.
Okay, I am so, we are so upset about this that I can barely speak.
Okay, I'm just very concerned, right now, again, it goes back to what I was talking to the seventeen Whitney Road people about.
All right, I'll close with.
There is no.
None of you people want this literally in your front yard.
Yeah.
Let alone a car coming through your living room when they leave the bar.
We understand to those that spoke in regards to Diamond Avenue, that there is a process for an application, if something were to come in, there's a process that is held by the commission and by statutes and by regulations, and one of the most important parts of that process is the public hearing process, and that is the time that is appropriate to really make your you were very clear this evening on how you feel, and that was made very apparent to the commission, but to get into the details and the, and the and the sincerity of your pleas this evening, it really is more appropriate for the public.
It's just practice.
Okay, thank you.
We're just getting warmed up.
Oh, you did a very good job, okay? It's a boom, thank you. All right.
Thank you.
And that's it, Mr. Chair.
David, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, not at this time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
So, can I make a motion to adjourn?
Second?
Second.
Home favor.
All right.
Right.
Thank you.